I want to call to order the January 13 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. And I want to welcome those of you that are here tonight. We've got lots of people here tonight. We often don't have this many people, so this is great. I know we've got some people that are interested in some things, in particular on the agenda tonight. I think we've got one or two classes from the university that are here tonight. We've got a couple of folks here who are going to run for council or run for mayor, who are also here tonight, in addition to the usual people. So, welcome, welcome here tonight. Also, I want to welcome those who might be watching us on Channel 10. Or those who might be watching on the computer, or those who might be listening to us on the computer, or those who might be listening to us on the radio. This is your city government, and we do hope you'll participate in whatever way works for you. So again, I welcome you, thanks for being here. Good to see you, great crowd. Okay, I'm going to ask the clerk to take the roll call of the council members.
Pansky?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Peck?
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Teller?
Here.
Present six.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody in the room to please rise. We will have the invocation led by Councilmember Pansky, and then we're going to have the students help us with the pledge.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask our students, just turn around here and look at all these people out here, and so the people on television can see you too. I'm going to come down. These people want to meet you folks. I do want you to know that we do appreciate you coming tonight and helping us out with the pledge. So let's see what we can find out a little bit about each one of you. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to pass the microphone down here, and I'll ask each one of you to indicate what your name is, where you go to school, what grade you're in. And we're off to a new year, a cold one so far, but a new year. And oftentimes, the people do for the new year is they come up with some resolutions of things that they're going to do during the next year that maybe they didn't do last year, or maybe they want to make some improvement on in some way, shape, or form. So if you have a new year's resolution, I'd ask that you share that with the people here and the people that are watching on television. Again, your name, where you go to school, and the grade you're in.
My name is Allison Norris, and I go to Reed Elementary. I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Courtney Carpenter. I go to Roosevelt Elementary, and I'm also in fifth grade.
My name is Sophie Michael. I go to Reed Elementary, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Vinnie Bird, and I go to Roosevelt School, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Logan Pinkerton, and I go to Reed School, and I'm in fifth grade.
The other thing I have here for you tonight is I have a certificate of appreciation. So we do, again, we do appreciate you coming down and taking the time out and visiting with us. So I'll pass these down to each one of you. If we could have a little applause for our students here tonight, appreciate it. Okay, now it's time. You folks want to go home and do whatever you're going to do? Do a little studying tonight, or whatever?
That's your new year's.
Feel free to do so, or watch TV. You don't have to sit here with all these people for the next two hours. So again, thanks. Have a great evening. I have a proclamation that I want to read here tonight. I'll read the proclamation, and I'll present the proclamation, and Greg will have a few words to share with us tonight about some of the things that you're doing. The proclamation has to do with Big Brothers and Big Sisters of the Fox Valley region. Whereas, in its 48th year history, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Fox Valley region has helped establish more than 8,500 friendships between caring, responsible mentors in children in need of guidance each year. And whereas, the dedicated Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Big Couples annually invest many hours of their time in the lives of their young friends. And whereas, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Fox Valley regions partners with local schools and provides mentors in a safe environment to many local youth through mentoring programs and 50 Bigs in 50 Days campaign. And whereas, the time invested in the lives of little brothers and little sisters pays great dividends to society by greatly reducing the likelihood that these children will experiment with drugs and alcohol, skip school, lie to adults, or engage in violent and delinquent behavior. And whereas, by providing these children with tutorial, educational, cultural, social, and recreational activities which may not be available to them through other means, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Fox Valley region helps improve a child's self-confidence, self-image, and put confidence in their future. And whereas, when the children feel better about themselves, they perform better in school, are more optimistic about their future, are willing to attempt new challenges, and are better prepared to function in society and the workforce. Now therefore, I, Burke Tower, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim the week of January 18 through January 24, 2015, as Big Brothers, Big Sisters Week in the Fox Valley region, and encourage all citizens of the City of Oshkosh to support Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Fox Valley region in their voluntary efforts, and officially recognize the service of these volunteers that they give to children. So I want to thank you for that, sent you with the proclamation. I'd like to say a few words, I want you to introduce the two of you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Tower. Greg Waller, I serve as Executive Director for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and to my left here is Lori Alltrade, who is our lead match specialist. And I want to thank you for honoring us today and presenting this. We are in the middle of our 50 Bigs in 50 Days campaign, which is a recruitment campaign. We're recruiting additional bigs to serve children in the community that are looking for a mentor. So if you've ever thought about becoming a big, please check us out on our website So we hope that you consider becoming a big, and we'd like to see you be part of our organization. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thanks to the organization, to each of you for all you do for the children in the area. Thank you very much. Okay, next thing on the agenda is we have a presentation here tonight, and I'm going to ask the city manager to introduce our presenter. The presentation has to do with a visioning study that was undertaken for Oshkosh as we begin to look ahead to our future. Talk a little bit about the study and the results.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eric Fowle is the Executive Director with the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Periodically, East Central will, as part of the dues that are paid on our behalf by Winnebago County, they'll provide some services to their member organizations. And the project that East Central has graciously agreed to do for us was riverfront visioning, which was something that the council was looking for. So Eric and his staff have put some information together after a number of public workshops. I know many of the council members attended, and Eric's going to give a little briefing on where we were. This is a truncated version. I made sure Eric knew that. He actually made a presentation to the Plan Commission back in December. So if you like what you heard from Eric and you want to hear more, I would suggest that you go back in the archives to take a look at the December 16 Plan Commission meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fowle.
Thank you, Mr. Fowle. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for some time this evening. Yes, this will be a truncated version, and I'll watch the clock right here. I suspect that all of you have gotten a copy of the full report from the visioning session. I hope you've read it cover to cover at some point. Don't expect that to be the case for this evening, but I do want to give a short summary of that. So this really starts with what is a common issue in communities of your size and in location along the river. Rivers have long been an artery and a lifeblood of a city or a community, and like many communities, transitions happen over time. Industrial heyday brought riches to the community, and one of the reasons Oshkosh is here. Those uses have come and gone, and things have transformed from an industrial base to one that typically is neglected. And certainly, City of Oshkosh has done a lot over at least the past 10 years, if not longer, to try and transform that and turn a face back to the river, and you see many communities doing that. It's a challenge, but I think people are wholeheartedly embracing the economic opportunity that exists now, although it's different than what it has been historically. So how do you plan for this? This is a large stretch of riverfront, very diverse, a lot of things going on, a lot of changes, a lot of opportunities. What do you need to know before you embark on perhaps a more expensive master planning process, or even looking at doing updates to your comprehensive plan? And what's needed essentially is a vision. And as Mark had explained, through work that we have done at East Central, successful work in other communities, namely Kimberly and the abandoned New Page Mill site, we've been doing work in New Holstein for the abandoned Tecumseh site, and a handful of other projects, we've developed a process that we feel engages the citizenry more and really comes up with some good answers, good ideas, in a very simplistic form. I argue that as planners, we get embroiled in the details too often, and we don't step back and just ask the simple questions. It's amazing what kind of responses you can get. So we embarked on a process of developing three workshops with community development staff, figuring out the exercises, mapping the interactive pieces that would really help to engage people, and we certainly appreciate the city staff's support on this. We couldn't have done it without them. So we had three meetings back in August during the summer. We intentionally chose the sites that were on the river, so people could see that and kind of view the river and get inspiration. We chose accessible sites, and we did have them at a variety of times during the day. Two of them during the early evening, and one during the lunch hour along the River Walk, so we could try and tap into more of the business community. Not sure we were successful there, but it was nice to be outside, a little bit warm at that location, though. The workshops in total, we have documented 72 attendees, although we know there were more than that. There were probably a few folks that didn't sign in. We know there were couples that came in that probably signed in as one. So a conservative estimate could probably be as high as 90 people. Out of a community your size that's rather small, but for these types of engagements, that's actually pretty good. I was still hoping for more, but we had a pretty good representation out there from community members and those that even live beyond the community. When folks came in, we asked them if they'd identify generally where they live, and as you can see by the map, a good dispersion of folks from across the community, and even some from outside of the community. The river is a feature that is used by more than those that are just your residents and does draw people from outside. So we were pleased to see the breadth of the participants. What we did essentially was conducted six tabletop exercises, had staff at each of them, and then compiled results and data, which is shared in the report. So I want to highlight some of those out of each of the six exercises quickly. The first exercise was called "Who or What Is Oshkosh?", really asking questions about the identity, the perceived identity, the perceptions of the community, whether it is historic in nature, sort of the current, the here and now, or the future identity, the vision, what they want to see happen. And there's some really interesting things in here, and this is a synopsis of the top statements that were filtered to the top. The rest are in an appendix. But the history, I think, obvious things such as Sawdust City, the lumber industry, industrial uses, and the like are noted there. Those are things that can be built upon, obviously. The current identity, event, city, a number of events, activities related to the river. So there is a good association with the river. I was a little surprised that item seven there is really, while this was meant to generate positive comments, sort of a negative in there is the Pioneer and Buckstaff sites are eyesores. When that comes to the surface in terms of identity, it really, I think, reinforces the fact that those are critical sites and things that need to be dealt with because it does portray the image of the city. The future identity, not really any surprises here. A lot of good thoughts, and I think these thoughts are reinforced quite well through the other exercises and data. In many of these cases, I would argue the city is well on its way, but there's always more work to do, and perhaps there's even ways to do things better. I'm always a fan of finding ways to improve things. So this list is essentially your challenge as we see it. It's not written as a long vision statement, but these pieces are really what you ought to keep in mind as you pursue additional planning on that site. The river corridor, that is. And you want to keep this momentum going, obviously. Some of these things lie deep in the heart of the participants, and I know they'd love to see action or movement towards these things since they were asked. Over 650 individual responses from that exercise alone. I talked about the things that were kind of surfaced, and you need to find ways to work with these things in all three categories. You need to leverage the history. You need to look at trying to be an active part of initiatives that are developed along the riverway, the Fox, Wisconsin Heritage Parkway, for instance, looking at promoting, integrating that history into the River Walk where opportunities present themselves. You need to capitalize on those current events. A lot of comments and thoughts in later exercises that talk about capturing the population that drives up and down 41 and doesn't even know there's a river or downtown here. Capitalizing on events, EAA and the like, and getting folks to realize, hey, there's something else cool over there. Draw them in. Could be signage, could be other physical connections and the like. You need to make that river a destination. I think slowly it's becoming that. Someone actually noted that, well, Oshkosh always wants to try and be Appleton, which has a nice downtown. Not that you don't, but it's not the same downtown. You don't have the river in the same way Appleton does. That is your asset. That is what you need to capitalize on and focus attention on. Bring the other things along with it, obviously. Some of the mapping exercises were quite interesting, and we basically placed maps out for this exercise. We wanted to know the extent of the influence of the river, and basically about 68 or 70 different boundaries were drawn, compiled, and then what's shown on here is what we feel is sort of the consensus of how folks define the river, how near or how far. And this could be used as a study area for master planning, a variety of uses or variations of it. And looking at a couple of areas downtown in particular, and along the south side, a little bit iffy in terms of whether those are really considered part of the riverfront or not. They need further exploration, or as they embark on other planning, keep that in mind and think and talk about those types of things. We had an exercise called "Connect the Dots", which basically asked the question of what areas in the city ought to be better connected to the river. That might be physically, it might be socially, it might be economically. This is a composite map. I didn't put all the descriptors on here, but it shows a lot of things. General consensus of trying to get Menominee Park on the north and Fugelberg Park on the south, essentially the lake shore, to be defined as part of the river and make connections to those areas. Lot of support for a boardwalk on the south side of the lake shore. More direct need to capture people and bring them towards the river from Highway 41, from the events that I has mentioned. Moving across the river is pretty good in most spots, but some desire perhaps for a pedestrian connection between Highway 21 and Wisconsin Street Bridge. There's a long gap there. Lot of support for extending the River Walk the entire length of the river. Moving along the river is very important. So what you can do with this, obviously, one of the first things that comes to mind, look at any and all plans you have that have transportation within it. Look at these ideas, ensure some of these things are in there, or perhaps are evaluated in the future in terms of projects or potential projects. Fourth exercise was called "Places and Spaces". We're basically asking folks, what's your favorite place along the river? Everybody has one. The composite map shows well over 150 features or locations that were identified by participants, some of them more than others, whether they're businesses such as the Ground Round and the Patio, Fratello's, Beckett's, facilities like the Leach Amphitheater, certain segments of the River Walk. A lot of good things down there, and you want to take a look at that in terms of conservation, preservation, enhancement, improvement, or even replication of some of those types of features, or the feel that they give the person in other places along the riverfront. We asked the opposite question, what needs fixing? And no shortage of answers here. But we try and do this in a positive light. And based on the number of responses, probably again, an equal number, at least 100 different responses, the things that kind of came to the surface and ranked highly included more riverfront trail, River Walk connections, there's certain spots, there's gaps, direct access to the water for watercraft and recreation, improving upon that, and certainly redevelopment of key sites along the river. Pioneer, Buckstaff site, the Gelledwyn site, Axeltec, and continuation of the Marion Road area. I know initiatives and things have been going on with some of those sites, so I think this helps support some of the past work, but obviously, there's a lot more work to do. Exercise six was a worksheet-based exercise. There were four different land use types illustrated, and a range of options or alternatives in terms of the intensity or style of development. Each person that participated filled out one or more of these and kind of gave their range. But just very quickly, some of the things that came to the top in terms of numerical rankings, in terms of new development for housing, preference for small multifamily housing versus larger residential structures, or smaller duplexes, or things of that nature, kind of keeping things at the medium scale. In terms of commercial and retail development, a strong preference for street-oriented, commercial, mixed-use development, not big boxes, not small freestanding convenience stores or things of that nature, but something that is pedestrian-oriented. Other employment types of uses went more towards the larger, light industrial, research park type of building or office park development. Although I would caution you that being in a very urban environment, you probably want to maximize the use of the land and avoid a lot of campus-type feel. No disrespect to UWO, but in an urban setting, you want to maximize that land. So be cautious with the space around such buildings. And then we asked about parking, and a pretty strong preference in an urban environment for structured parking, above-ground, multi-level structured parking, which again, fits very well in a dense urban setting in terms of maximizing land use and not wasting a lot with surface area parking. The last part of this exercise was simply a catch-all. What big ideas do you have? And many of the comments that were made tied back or reinforced items that were noted before, but there are a handful of new ideas which were identified in here. Some of those, we tried to get participants to visualize, so there's a series of maps that kind of show location and some notes. And then there's an appendix that has at least another 75 written comments of big ideas. Some of them perhaps are feasible, some might be very pie in the sky. That's not for us to determine, that's for the Council/Plan Commission staff to kind of sift through that and through other public planning processes, vet those things out. Some examples of bigger ideas included a visitor's center on the north end of Highway 41, a bridge, potential reuse of the golf course. That could be a political hot potato, I'm sure, but there are some that think that parts of that site or all that site could be put to a higher and better use. Other comments about more hotels or resorts, microbreweries, other business types. So it's an interesting list of things that has been generated there. To wrap things up, one of the themes that we preach as planners recently is that of the concept of placemaking. And a lot of the information that was generated by the public, by the community, really has a place in this concept. And I think when it comes down to it, bottom line, people want a great place. And a great place will be vibrant, will be economically successful, and there are ways to do that, and ways to integrate that concept into the day-to-day planning, the ordinance development, and those kind of things. So we would encourage the city to look into this and look at how to capitalize on that concept. So just a couple parting thoughts. Remember, this vision wasn't done in a scientific method. It is sort of random reality check at that point in time, but we do think that given the number of people that came out, the kind of engagement we have, there is some validity to this. I would feel pretty confident that most of the things in here are probably representative of the community as a whole. I mentioned it before, but patterns start to emerge. You'll see that in different exercises, different comments, and once those things are identified, they can gain momentum. So my advice would be not to sit on this too long, do something with it, or direct somebody else to do something with it, and start that process of engagement for other planning, the comprehensive plan, if you're going to embark on master planning. This is really a no-brainer that the consultant, whoever they may be, really ought to be trying to integrate as much as possible. So with that, I thank again the various staff that participated here, and certainly am available for questions.
Council members have questions or comments?
Just one quick one, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fowle, thanks for your organization's work on this, it's appreciated. As you know, there's a number of concerted municipal efforts to revision and rebuild riverfront waterways in Green Bay, DePere, Little Shute, Coconna, Appleton, Menasha, where you guys are located there. And of course, you said Kimberly may be working on one as well. Is there, I guess I'm curious if your organization has been involved doing something similar to this in any of those communities, and is there any benefit to attempting to at least share information among communities? Are there similarities, I guess, that can be drawn upon, efficiencies that can be created? And you did mention, I know the Fox, Wisconsin Heritage Parkway, but that's obviously a much larger effort in its scope.
That is an excellent point you bring up, and I can appreciate that. Oftentimes, communities are competitive with one another, and they kind of hold their secrets and their plans close to one another, even though they're technically public documents. But with the sheer amount of activity happening along the riverfront in the communities, it might be a very good idea to form a little collaboration, or a committee, or a group that meets periodically, whether it's the administrators of those communities, to share information. They're each trying to achieve very similar things. We think, or would hope, that there's enough room in the marketplace for all of these projects. They have success over time, and we shouldn't be making mistakes that others have made in this day and age. So I think it would be worthwhile reaching out to those communities. The City of Appleton, I believe, is planning and embarking on a master plan process for their downtown, which I would presume will include the riverfront as well, probably within the next year. And so maybe they can learn a few things from what you guys have done here, too.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Mr. Mayor, just wondering if you had any sort of information on the age ranges of the participants of the study? I know I brought my nine-year-old with me to do a little bit of work, because I wanted his opinion on some of these things, and I was just wondering if there were other children involved, and then on the other end as well, how elderly were?
Well, I'll tell you, I couldn't tell the nine-year-old results from the 40-year-olds, and I think that's the beauty of the process. We didn't have a lot of young people, admittedly. I think most of it was probably folks at least 30 and over, the bulk probably kind of being in that middle area, 35 to 60, somewhere in there. It would have been great to have additional children there and younger folks who presumably are going to inherit the river, and you're building it for them. It would be a great idea to maybe even look at a little school project, see if there's some time in the day where some little exercises like this could be done with the kids, or different school groups, or nonprofit organizations. Planning isn't rocket science, I'll be the first to admit, and sometimes the kids have the best idea.
They come up with some great ideas.
Or the worst ones, one of the two.
Thank you.
So, no, good point, thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Just a comment. First, appreciate East Central doing this work, but I think I was part of the visioning and went down there and worked on it, but I think our strategic plan is focusing a lot on what this study came up with already. We're continuing to work on the riverfront, which ties into the tribal trail, which goes across 41. We are looking at RFPs to do a parking study in the central downtown area that will affect part of the riverfront when that study gets completely done. So to his comment of not sitting on things, I think we've already taken some actions based on some of the things that came out of their study. So it reconfirms what we're working with, with our staff, with our things. You know, we approved an apartment complex on the riverfront which mixes in with the mixed-use housing. Some of us were at the West Side Associations meeting the other day, and Morgan Properties talked about some things that they're working on. Some other businesses talked about some things that are happening. Mr. Larsen talked about some things that are happening at City Center and expansion there. So I think we are already taking some of the things that East Central has pointed out through this study that we need to focus on in our area. And we had the story on the Buckstaff's property, thanks to Mr. Bowyer and the Northwestern, let the citizens know what we're doing there, and we haven't had an update and got some big news with the Pioneer and some stuff. So I think the study is confirming that we're moving in the right direction and continuing, and to have that study as a template is very important. and continuing, and to have that study as a template is very important as we move forward with our projects in the riverfront, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any else?
One other comment, too. It pretty much reinforces the plan that was done about 10 years ago for Marion Road, and there's a lot of similarities about the density and so forth, but as Steve said, there's a lot of stuff that's going on. We're referring to our downtown as more of the central city that has a river running through it, trying to get away from the north side, the south side, finally. But we're also working with the state and so forth to expand the historic district to include buildings like our library, the Northwestern building, the old post office, a neoclassical district, so we're working on these things, you know, that are on really both sides of the river, and then we're now working with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the museum and so forth, the bid board, developing historic tourism in the city, the bulk of which will focus on the central city again because of the age of the buildings and the architecture, so there's a lot of things, Steve said, that are going on that are happening very quickly now, so, but thank you, Eric, this is a good presentation.
My pleasure, and I always like to end these by saying, don't thank me, but thank Winnebago County, who as a member of the commission affords us the ability to do these projects, so, but these are actually the fun kind of things to do and very enlightening, and we hope that the information, even though it's subject to interpretation, is valuable for you, reinforces some of the good things the city has done and keeps you pushing forward, that didn't hear any real complaints out of folks that participated, if that makes you feel better. Might have some physical improvements that need to be made, but no complaints.
Just one other quick comment, too, that so much of the country was founded on rivers, which were industrial, have all become industrials gone, and there are communities that are investing huge sums of money to turn them into more recreational destinations away from the industrial, so I think it'd be wise for all of us to kind of keep an eye out for what other communities are doing, they located on old industrial rivers, to see what they've done.
That's working.
Huh?
That's working.
Dubuque is one.
Yeah.
Augusta is one.
Okay, couple things, want to thank you, Eric, and East Central for conducting the study for us, we very much appreciate that. And I want to play up on a comment you made and what the two Steves made, having to do with looking ahead. You do a study and you got to look ahead and see what comes next, and one of the things I think the city has done a great job with, the staff and the various departments have done a great job with, and really the council, is developing a number of different plans that are out there, Steve made comments. I think our challenge, our challenge is to put this all together, because as Mr. Cummings said, and somebody else, there are lots of dollars to be involved to get from here to there, and we got all these plans, so somehow or another, and I'm going to challenge Mr. Roloff with this one, how do we begin to bring these plans together so we can come up with a implementation plan? We, all these things take a lot of capital dollars, we know our capital dollars are limited, and we have some other areas for them, some idea on how we can bring these together so we have sort of a set of priorities as we look out 10 to 15 years, as we begin to look for help, say from a foundation, figuring out what our high priority items are, and 16, 17, 18, 19, as the case may be, because I think that's going to be our real challenge, because there are lots of ideas and lots of things going on, but I think we're going to have to bring some things together and prioritize to figure out how we get some dollars to make, get the most smack and do things in the right order.
Well, the key is to develop a plan based on the visioning. Now we have a framework that we'd like to see the plan developed under, we have the downtown action plan that was done back in 2001, and for the most part, we implemented that plan, which is to the credit of everybody that was involved, and so now, what the next phase is, is I think we need to take a look at what new things we want to, what's the next new thing we want to achieve, and I think part of it is, you know, developing a plan, I remember part of the impetus for this was a discussion at the Plan Commission about a specific development, and the idea was, does this fit in with what we want to accomplish? This doesn't necessarily give you an absolute, you must do this, you must do that, but it gives you a framework, and I think one of the things it does, it tells you what you don't want, and those are things we want to, we want to be very careful that when somebody comes in with a development proposal, if there's something we don't want, you're probably going to see it through the visioning process, but we want to maintain flexibility. There's a lot of open space that we have out on our riverfront right now, we want to make sure that whatever we put in there is of high quality, so as we develop plans, we may need to have some thresholds for minimum investment per acre, things like that, because we want to make sure that whatever we do, we get some return on our investment. And it was interesting to note that in Mr. Fowler's presentation, I think even the public recognizes, they don't want small little lots, but they don't want anything too big either. Two to four stories seem to be something with residential, they know they want to have, that we need some intensity to get some value out of it, but we don't want it to be, to overshadow everything else we have, so this is a good start, the downtown action plan, or what we're new recalling it, is going to be part of that, and then parking's going to be part of that as well, because we have to make sure that our infrastructure is going to be able to meet the needs of whatever practical plans we put in to the dreams that we've identified in the vision study. Long way to say and we'll see.
I would, if I might, I would argue that at least at this stage, the visioning and maybe even the first steps of master planning, whatever process is chosen, I wouldn't let money be too much of a limiting factor. If it's not on paper and it's a good idea, it's not, you know, I should take that back, if it's a good idea and it's not on paper, it's not going to happen. You need to get those things on paper, and I always look at Madison as a perfect example, Monona Terrace, Frank Lloyd Wright's building, they tried to plan and build that for 100 years. It took a while, but it finally happened, so think about that.
Again, I thank, just one other comment?
One other comment, too, and I think we've had this discussion before, whatever we do with the riverfront and the old downtown, it's going to be here for 50, 75 years, so we better be patient and think it through before we start to do brick and mortar, because we will, we won't, but children will.
You and I will.
You and I.
Okay, again, Eric.
Thank you again.
Thanks for taking on the challenge, join us in a limited time, too.
Have a great evening.
Great job, thanks. Okay, that takes us to citizen statements to the council. This is when people have an opportunity to come up to the microphone, which is open up here. If there's something in the city that's going well, then you want to comment on it, we love that, but also if you have some concerns about something in the city, we'd like to hear about that. We do a few ground rules that go with it, the first one is, is if you come up to the microphone at this point in time, we want you to provide your name and your address, limit your comments to no more than five minutes, don't talk about other things on the agenda tonight, there'll be time for those things later, when we talk about those agenda items, speak directly to the council, and no electioneering. So if anybody would like to come forward and speak to the microphone at this point in time, feel free. I see no one coming forward, will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting to do the same thing. Okay, so that takes us through the consent agenda items. What I do, the consent agenda items are made up of a number of what administration feels are non-controversial items, and therefore, we tend to look at these items as a package, so we go through them as a package and we'll vote for them as a package, unless either a citizen, one of you, or a council member decides that they want to have an item pulled from the consent agenda and have it considered separately, and if that request is made, we will pull that particular item and consider it separately. Where the process is going to work, I'm going to read through the items, and as I'm reading through the items, if you'd like to comment on an item as I read that item, I'd appreciate it if you'd come up to the microphone. Once I've read through the items and gotten citizens' comments on all the items, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion by the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I received a couple requests to pull the Resolution 15-14, the Menominee Park Zoo Master Plan, from the consent agenda. Have a feeling a few folks want to talk about it and just comment on it, so it's probably best just to remove that from consent right away.
Okay, that's item 17.
Thank you.
I'll strike that, three.
17 is pulled from the consent agenda, so I won't read it, the consent agenda, we'll consider it separately. Okay, I'm going to start reading through. Approval of bills presented by the Finance Director, approval of cash report from November 2014, receipt of claims filed to the city's insurance company, Travis Walt, for alleged sewer backup. Resolution 15-01, rescind personal property taxes, bay moon massage and therapeutic body work, 923 Oregon Street. Resolution 15-02, approve partial rescission of Resolution 14-532, awarding bids for chemicals for water filtration and wastewater treatment plant, and award sodium hydroxide 30 percent portion to Hydrate Chemical Company. Resolution 15-03, renew bird city Wisconsin designation, designate May 2, 2015, as International Migratory Bird Day. Resolution 15-04, approve setting up public hearing date to vacate portion of 1400 Lock on Mount Vernon Street. Resolution 15-05, approve conditional use permit for extension of existing telecommunications tower, 1821 Jackson Street. Resolution 15-06, approve conditional use permit, planned development, architectural design for construction of a utility structure, sanitary pump at 1975 Snell Road. Resolution 15-07, approve conditional use permit, planned development for commercial restaurant with drive-through, 1090 North Washburn Avenue, North Washburn Street. Resolution 15-08, approval of change order number one for Public Works contract number 12-21, with Badger Laboratories and Engineering, Inc., for industrial wastewater sampling and analysis services. Resolution 15-09, approval of amendment to agreement for engineering services with Brown and Codwell for development of a stormwater management plan for Furno Avenue area watershed and the north industrial park. Resolution 15-10, approve professional services, professional service agreement with AECOM for parking lot development at Riverside Park Phase 2, and parking lot connection for Boatworks property. Resolution 15-11, approval of engineering services agreement with Brown and Codwell for design and bid support services for the Furno Avenue watershed, North Main Street area stormwater detention base. Resolution 15-12, approval of agreement for engineering services with Graemer and Associates for design and bidding services for West Furno Avenue concrete paving project. Resolution 15-13, approval of agreement for engineering services with speedy clean drain and sewer for sanitary and storm sewer main and lateral televising. Resolution 15-14, that'll be the zoo plan, which will be pulled for separate consideration. Resolution 15-15, approve intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city of Oshkosh and the Oshkosh area school district for operation of Pollock Community Water Park. Resolution 15-16, authorize the filing of applications for federal operating and capital assistance, state operating assistance, and county transportation assistance. Resolution 15-17, approve agreements for transportation services with Winnebago County. Resolution 15-18, approve 2015 software maintenance agreements for IT Division to ESRI, Inc., and Harris Computer Systems, data now. Resolution 15-19, award bid for City Hall fourth floor HVAC improvements for general services to Kirkman Mechanical. I'm going to do some special events, I won't use the word "special event" on each one of these. Resolution 15-20, Rotary Club of Oshkosh to utilize Leach Amphitheater and city streets for their snowflake shuffle of February 7, 2015. Resolution 15-21, Oshkosh Southwest Rotary to utilize Menominee Park for their Battle on Bago, February 27 and 28, 2015. Resolution 15-22, UW Oshkosh Student Recreation to utilize city streets for their UW Oshkosh Yamrock Shuffle, 5K Run Walk, March 14, 2015. Resolution 15-23, Oshkosh Fast Club to utilize Reeds Diamonds at Menominee Park for their Greater Raider Open, June 5, 6, and 7, 2015. Resolution 15-24, disallowance of claim by Isaiah Royland and Christopher Royland. Resolution 15-25, approve combination Class B licenses, Class B fermented malt and Class C wine licenses, special Class B licenses, operator licenses, and taxi cab driver license. Okay, if anybody, if I went too fast and you get a chance to come forward, the microphone still remains open if you want to comment on any of these items, ask that one be removed. Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council and ask the council if they have questions or discussion on any of the items or want anything else pulled other than item 17, which is Resolution 15-14. Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 15-05, I just want to make a comment that's connected to the cell tower by the McDonald's restaurant. I received a phone call late this afternoon from the president of the church council, the church that's nearby with some concerns from their elderly members of the church concerned about the tower and the height, et cetera. There were questions I could not answer, so I just wanted the council to know, I received the phone call and I referred him to Jim Weinman, who sent us a memo that was included with our paperwork and his phone number, and told him to contact him with his questions and concerns, because they dealt with power of the tower, et cetera, affecting the hearing loop that the church has for the elderly folks, and would there be problems with pacemakers and all those types of microwave things that cell towers put out, that I could not answer, so just to let council know, I referred him to the person that put it in here, but I told him that they gave us assurances that those types of things from his memo were not a problem, just so council is aware, that I did receive a phone call.
Any comments? Comment on this item, this item came up before on the height of the tower, and that's really a change in the height, in case anybody recalls, I do recall that discussion. The council basically voted down taking the height from what was about 50 feet to 80 feet. In the meantime, since that happened the last time, there's been some new state statutes which indicate that councils don't have the power to do so.
Yep, that's what I told them, too.
So like is so often the case, the state tells us what we can do and what we can't do, and tell us what we have to do, and in this case, we do have to take a vote, so it's not taken from us, we're still responsible, but we do not have the ability to say no, quite frankly. Anything else for anybody? If not, I'll ask for a motion in a second on the consent agenda minus item 17, which is Resolution 15-14.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any more questions or discussion on the consent agenda minus Resolution 15-14? If not, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on the consent agenda minus Resolution 15-14.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate 6.
Okay, we did have one item removed from the consent agenda, as I mentioned a couple of times there, that is Resolution 15-14, and so I'm going to read it now, if you'd like to comment on it, feel free to come up to the microphone, the microphone remains open. Resolution 15-14, approve city of Oshkosh Menominee Park Zoo Master Plan. Anybody like to come forward? Seeing no one coming forward, I will bring it back to the council for a motion in a second on Resolution 15-14.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Mr. Cummings would like to comment.
Thank you, Mayor Tower. I'm a member of the board of the Oshkosh Zoological Society, so I was part of this whole task force, including other board members, some of which are here tonight. The community was invited for their input on this project, and I assume everyone had a chance to pick up their report. I would encourage all the citizens in Oshkosh to stop by City Hall to get a copy of the report. This is another thing we talk about, quality of life, and, you know, I think we've all enjoyed the zoo for years and years. This takes the zoo up to a higher and a different level, and two things that came out very strong during the task force was the educational possibilities and an aquarium, and by aquarium, I don't mean the ones we all had in our bedrooms as kids, these are major, major aquariums. Part of the plan will include for an education center that some of it will go over the existing pond, and working with the consultants, we had the director of the museum come in, and there are discussions to move the wetlands exhibit from the entrance of the museum to the educational building at the zoo. And one of our board members is a deputy superintendent of schools, so he was very much behind the educational portion, but everyone was, including Parks Board. And one of the consultants on this, that we hired to work on this project, designed the Mississippi River Museum in Dubuque, Iowa, and I've been there a couple of times. I'm not a fisherman, but it's an incredible tourist draw, what they've done with the history of that portion of the Mississippi River and the fishing, and so I would encourage anyone, if you're in the Dubuque area, to stop by the Mississippi River Museum, but it'll be that quality and caliber of an attraction in the city, and I think the whole task force, the other members of the society, just put a lot of time... I think the whole task force, the other members of the society just put a lot of time and effort into this. It's a well-thought-out plan, and again, I encourage anyone who hasn't looked at the document to stop by City Hall, but the clerk's office have copies?
Yes, we do.
The clerk's office, so I'm fully, obviously, in support of this plan, it's great.
Other comments?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Herman?
Just one comment. This is a copy, it's an excellent document, as council member Cummings has said, I think we as a city owe a couple people a huge debt of thanks for making the zoo free to all citizens of Oshkosh, and that's Bill and Penny Herrenberg, who makes a sizable donation to the city of Oshkosh to make it free to all of our citizens to go to the master park, to go to the zoo that'll allow us to continue to focus on expanding our zoo. It has come a long ways in my time here in Oshkosh, and last year we opened the Otter Exhibit, I think it was last year?
Last year.
And so that's excellent, and I think our Parks Department staff does excellent work there, and to have the quality that we have for a city our size, it's pretty unique, and so I think, Eric, if you know Bill and Penny Herrenberg, or you see him, or you meet him at some function, thank them very much, because not only our zoo, but they made a donation to the Sheriff's Office to purchase another canine, so they are very involved with the animals and animals at the zoo and everything else, so we owe a great debt to them and appreciate their work.
Tom Herrenberg.
Tom, I'm sorry. I know I kept saying Bill, you're right, Tom. And I should know that, because I know him very well. I apologize for that, Tom, but it's Tom Penny Herrenberg, so thank you very much.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just want to echo the sentiments that Mr. Cummings had, from the park advisory board perspective. We had three different meetings on this matter, went through a couple different revisions, so it was heavily looked at, thanks to Mr. Maurer and his staff for working with a consultant and community groups, as well as Zoological Society, to really ensure that every opinion that should have been weighed into this was weighed into it. I won't reiterate what Mr. Cummings said about the new amenities, it does offer more opportunity for parking out at the zoo, which sometimes on nice days, attractive days out there, can be a bit of a challenge to get something close, so there'll be some enhanced parking, but we're still preserving the beauty that the site and the park as a whole have while enhancing what's going to be, you know, one of the more preeminent zoos in this part of Wisconsin.
Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize, sum up what Mr. Herman and Mr. Cummings had said as well. There was a significant amount of time that went into the plan, and I know we had talked about it for a long time, so to see an actual document is pretty exciting, and to see, and that's exactly what it is, is a plan. We have what we have now, it's getting from point A to point B, and I think it's exciting. There's some really neat ideas in here, we'll need to work on how we're gonna fund them, you know, and that'll be a challenge that we'll look forward to doing over the years to come, but I think it really indicates that there's a vision, you know, that the zoo and the park won't stay stagnant, that will evolve and move on to greater things and keep it exciting for, you know, generations to come in Oshkosh. So thank you to all those that invested a substantial amount of time and energy into this, it's exciting.
Again, I would thank folks also, and I think Allison Osby makes a point that this in many ways now is a vision, it's a vision, and also a plan to get there, so it's more than just some ideas out there, and I think that's what we have to do, but it will take some time, it'll also take some public-private partnerships as we go along, I'm sure, so it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but it pays that we look ahead and look ahead to the next generation, as was mentioned in the visioning before, so I think this is fantastic. Okay, if there are no further comments, I'm gonna ask clerk, take the roll call vote on resolution fifteen dash one-four.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate six.
Okay, that takes us to new ordinances, and these are new ordinances which have to be read at two council meetings, so we're gonna go through these one by one. If you'd like to comment on one of these as I read it, please feel free to come up to the microphone. The council will not be voting on these items tonight, they'll be voted on at the next meeting after the second reading, so if a thought comes to you over the next couple of weeks, you can still come back and make a comment on it at the next meeting. Okay, the first one is ordinance fifteen dash twenty-six, approval of parking regulation changes on Commerce Street, Evans Street, and Mallard Street, Mallard Avenue. Would I like to come forward? Okay. Then we'll go to ordinance fifteen dash twenty-seven, amend section six dash fourteen rabies vaccination to allow veterinarian technicians to administer rabies vaccine. If I'd like to come forward to speak to that. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, so we'll move on from there. Again, these will be read at the next council meeting, and they will be taken up for possible --
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a motion to waive the rules on ordinance fifteen dash twenty-six. The Transit Advisory Board made these recommendations on the parking to coincide with a move of bus stops, just so we can get this action in place. I would appreciate being able to vote on that item tonight.
I'd like to make a motion.
I would.
Waive the rules, vote on it. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Anybody like to comment on that, on having the vote taken tonight as opposed to having it taken next time, in order to provide better coordination?
Just off of that?
I'll bring it back.
One more?
Just one second, nobody wants to comment on it, I'll bring it back to the council. Okay, yes.
To go on with Councilor Pansky's comments, the Traffic Review also approved the other part of that ordinance which deals with parking along like Carmel Chris Shop and City Center, so the Parking Utility Board also, and Traffic Review also approved those changes, so.
Okay. Okay, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on waiving the rules and voting on fifteen dash twenty-six this evening.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate six.
Okay, so we've waived the rules, we will consider it, so I would look for a motion and a second on ordinance fifteen dash twenty-six.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on ordinance fifteen dash twenty-six.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate six.
Okay, that takes us to new resolutions. On these, we'll go through them one by one. Again, I will read them, if you want to make a comment on it, the microphone remains open to you. First one, resolution fifteen dash twenty-eight, approve and execute relocation order determination of necessity to acquire property on west side of North Main Street and east side of Jackson Street, north of west Furno Avenue, town of Oshkosh. If I'd like to comment on that. Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, concerns, questions. Mr. Herman?
Yeah, could I have Mr. Burridge come up a minute, please? Mr. Burridge, according to this resolution, we're going to be basically taken under like almost like an eminent domain, because the property owner doesn't want to sell it, right? From the minutes I get out of the planning commission, or how are we going about moving forward with this? I mean, it's more a detention pond, I understand that we need it, it's part of the Tiff District for that business industrial park, but are we forced to be buying it from the gentleman, or how, what do we, it wasn't real clear.
I can probably, this goes through the Plan Commission because that's required by law. This action tonight is a relocation order, this is the first step in what could be an eminent domain proceeding, but it doesn't necessarily work out that way. What this is, is officially stating our interest in possibly acquiring this property. So there's a lot of caveats there, we may decide later on that there's not value in doing that as we do additional engineering investigations, but based on our preliminary review with our consulting engineers, this is a location we believe is appropriate, so by law, we need to let the public know and put this on notice that we may be interested in this property. We know that some folks came to the Plan Commission meeting, expressed their concern about selling it, we were aware of that, but we're still required to do this relocation order so that there's no question later on that they weren't put on notice. This is really just the first step in what could potentially be a long process, and you know some of the acquisitions we've done, sometimes they can take a very long time, but we gotta start with this tonight.
So is it like, by approving this, it's more of a study of the area, that, or we already have identified it as a property we need?
Right.
So?
It's really a property we're interested in, but we're not, this is not acquiring the property. Before we do that, we have to provide them with a, an appraisal of the property, they may look at that appraisal and say, we'll take it, and we close on it, we come back to council to approve it, they may ask for a second appraisal, which we pay for on their behalf, they get to choose somebody of their own choosing, and based on those two appraisals, we may negotiate, and as you know that we've had closed sessions where we've discussed those negotiating strategies, but eventually, we come back and either get council to do an eminent domain if we can't come to an agreement, or we come back and say, we did reach agreement, and here's the price that we're recommending based on the negotiations, and we use a gentleman by the name of Randy Moss out of Green Bay who assists us with the acquisition if it gets that far.
Okay, all right. I guess you didn't have to say anything there.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions, discussion at this point? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on resolution fifteen dash twenty-eight.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate six.
Okay, that takes us to resolution fifteen dash twenty-nine, approve labor agreement Transit Division, A F S C M E, Ask Me Local seven ninety-six, A F L, C I O, for two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and seventeen. Anybody like to comment on that? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second on resolution fifteen dash twenty-nine.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on resolution fifteen dash twenty-nine.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate six.
Okay, the next thing is it takes us to resolution fifteen dash three zero, approve city manager performance evaluation for two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen compensation. Before I ask for comments on that, I'm gonna ask for the deputy mayor to make a few comments on this. One of the functions of the, actually, primary function of the deputy mayor is conduct, to lead the evaluation annually of the city manager, that process took place over a couple of months, November and December, and then tonight, kind of the final report and the outcome of that, so. Ms. Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor.
Any comment you want to make?
Thank you. I'd like to thank my fellow council members, those that were involved in the process of doing the city manager evaluation for Mr. Roloff. Through the consensus of council and through the process, we kept the process the same other than this year, we did do a informal mid-year review to touch base with Mark regarding performance so that we could indicate if there was any areas of concerns, and certainly give him the pat on the back that he deserved regarding the areas that we were highly impressed with, to move forward, because obviously, you know, we want our city manager to be successful for the year. So consensus statement, which is provided within the packet, but for those who are listening or watching on TV that haven't seen it, our statement to the public is Mark Roloff, Oshkosh City Manager, demonstrated throughout two thousand and fourteen dedication to the community, commitment to focus on council-directed goals and policy issues, and a vision to keep the city on a positive and progressive path. Mr. Roloff continues to operate with genuine enthusiasm and energy, he effectively communicates to the citizens, staff, and council in a manner that reflects his professionalism. The council directive is for Mr. Roloff to continue to be present and visible in the community, meet the needs of his staff, and follow the strategic plan. The council realizes that the city of Oshkosh is growing, that presents both opportunities and challenges, the council feels Mr. Roloff maintains the skills, attitude, and vision to be a successful city manager for the city of Oshkosh. So with those statements, therefore, we certainly offered Mr. Roloff another contract in which we were, we are pleased to announce that he accepted.
Okay, now, if anybody would like to come forward to comment on the aspect of the city manager's performance evaluation, process related there, too, feel free to. Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second on resolution fifteen dash three zero.
So moved? Second.
Any discussion? Further discussion? Been a lot of discussion over the last couple of months.
Yeah.
I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on resolution fifteen dash three zero.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate six.
Okay, that takes us to council discussion, direction to the city manager, and future agenda items. Number one, Go E D C update.
Just briefly, Go E D C is continuing to touch base with some key investors that they want, they've targeted. We're gonna be unrolling, unveiling a broader fundraising effort that is gonna be more general in nature, after Go E D C has identified some of their, the larger investors, that's a typical strategy with any major fundraising effort. Meanwhile, we're sending out invoices to some of those larger investors so that when we unveil everything, you'll see some of the larger investors. Meanwhile, we're starting the recruitment, and now that's the first of the year, started the recruitment for CEO, Mr. Weinman is serving as the interim CEO, and he'll remain in that place until we find a permanent CEO, and we've actually started to recruit an interview for communications manager, and I think we're gonna be making a decision on that shortly, so things are progressing very well, and I'm pleased that it's moving forward.
Okay, for those of you out there, this is the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation, which is a number of folks coming together from throughout the city to try and coordinate economic development efforts in the community as we move forward, so it's off the ground now on January one and operating, something took a while to put together, so thank you. Future agenda items, the first one, Grand Opera House Workshop originally was scheduled for January twentieth, found out after that was scheduled that there are some issues with the availability of people on the Opera House boards, so city managers recommend that a date change to February nine or February eleven, so I open it up for discussion. I will say that I did talk with Mr. Peck, who is away on business, tonight, and he is available for either the ninth or the eleventh, indicated, so throw it open for discussion.
Do we have a time in mind?
I believe, because we wanted, this was gonna be an exclusive item, it would be five to seven P M. type of arrangement.
Well, I do work at a candy store, that's the week of Valentine's Day, so I might not be able to get here right at five, but.
That's entirely, we could, we can be flexible with the time.
Five thirty to seven thirty, help?
I have a work conflict on the ninth. I personally'd like to see it stay on the twentieth. I think we've made, we've talked about where, what do we want to do with the grand, do we wanna enter contract with the Grand Opera House Foundation, or do we want to open it up for other possible people wanting to run the Opera House? I think the longer we postpone it, the farther we push it back, the harder the discussion becomes, the what, are we gonna continue? Are we gonna move forward? I mean, I understand Mr. Hartman can't be here, but he's the chair, they have a vice chair, there's other board members that can talk on behalf of the grand, because I'd like to go in the closed session to decide after this if we're gonna enter contract with the Grand Opera House, or we don't, because the farther we push it back, the farther they're gonna be planning their schedule into next year, and if we don't enter contract with them, we could be held responsible, or the new people we would lease the grand to have to pay those performances and things like that. I see no reason to postpone it, we have it on the twentieth and leave it at the twentieth and move forward.
Other thoughts?
I would agree with Mr. Herman. I think it's, the sooner the better.
I just want to make a note about the ninth of February is the, there is a Parks Board meeting that evening, but.
Yeah, I, the only conflict, I'd see. And I don't have any issue whether we keep the twentieth or move it to the eleventh.
Just works for me.
I think we ought to, we ought to move it, because Mr. Hartman is the chair and very involved with it. We've indicated that we think it's important to have a workshop with them, and they are a partner, and when we work with partners, we work with partners on setting dates, we don't say, hey, here's a date, try and make it at that time. It's too bad we didn't do it in the fall, but we're beyond the fall, we could have pushed it for the fall at the same time, so I think going to the ninth and eleventh is the appropriate thing to do, and it's the appropriate way that we work with partners, with partner organizations. way that we work with partners, with partner organizations. I think the workshop, I think we need to hear what folks have to say, and I think, again, Mr. Hartman is a key person with them, so I would much prefer to see the change. I think we'll be operating on less than total information that we should be operating on if he, and we don't open it up to them because they've indicated they would like to see it on one of those dates. So those are my thoughts.
I would share, and the reason I recommended changing the date was Mr. Hartman, when he indicated he wouldn't, he wouldn't be available for January 20, he said it is his intent that this would be, that everything would be resolved by April 1. So that was his goal, to have it done. We've extended the lease until June 30, so that would give us a couple of months. But that was his, his indication to me. I gave you a couple of dates only because you see a couple of items down. The school board was looking at having a meeting with us, and we were still kicking around a date there. Councilor Fitzgerald's correct, the Parks Board is meeting on the 9th, but if we moved it to the 11th, then we would very likely move the school board to March. So I just wanted to give you all the moving parts that you have in front of you at this time.
I think my thoughts in regards to this are very similar to Mr. Herman's. I do understand what Mayor Tower is saying in regards to Mr. Hartman. You know, however, I guess I'm not overly concerned because Frank Tower is the vice chair who's, I think, very, very capable. He's probably knows much more about the Grand really than a lot of people, and certainly obviously has served on council, so understands our position and role as well. And there are a lot of variables. You know, we're not really sure how we're, how we're moving forward as of yet, and I think it is shared responsibility as far as if, you know, there should have been a workshop this fall, both with the Grand Opera House Advisory Board, their executive director, and as well as us. So I would actually like to see it kept on the 20th. I think it's much harder for the seven of us to come to a date than it is, you know, perhaps, you know, one person that's on the exec committee on the board. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, and I've indicated what my thoughts are. I think, you know, we try to work with people, so I would hope we'd move it to make it work for them, same way it works for us.
I guess, you know, on that, Mr. Roloff, have we heard from any other board members from the Grand Opera House Board?
I don't know what Caroline is on this too.
I'm flexible. I'd prefer to do it the week, or the 20th.
Or is it just Mr. Hartman that the concern is? I only spoke with Mr. Hartman in terms of scheduling this.
So we haven't heard from any other board members or any of their other folks that would be part of that presentation that can't make that 20th date?
No, I'm, I'm not aware who from the Grand would attend if Mr. Hartman, well, he's out of town, so he won't be attending, but I don't, I don't know who they would be having to come if Mr. Hartman's unavailable.
It appears as though I'm kind of outvoted here, it looks like. Again, I am disappointed in that, but I accept that. So I guess we'll go ahead and do it on the 20th at 5:30. Also, we've, there is a, and we'll just have to ask them if they can have the other board members there, to the extent that that's possible, so. But my hope is, is we, when we work with people in the future, we do try to work with them.
Just to confirm, 5:00 PM, is that?
Let's do 5:00.
5:30?
The 20th will be fine. I can make it at 5:00.
I know Mr. Peck sometimes gets right up to 5:00.
Let's do 5:30. Mr. Peck represents...
5:30?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are set for...
Two hours.
It would be a two hour.
That's next Tuesday, right? Right there?
Correct.
Next Tuesday for two hours, or less if it takes less, but we ought to be able to do it with...
Which makes sense because that's a planning commission evening. I think that was the idea, to have it move after, it would be after planning commission because planning commission is at 4:00, so 5:30...
5:30 is better anyway.
Yes.
Is that, okay. Are we set then? Okay, so we will not be moving it. Okay, the next thing is the Sex Offender Workshop, which we have scheduled for January 26. I think we're still on there, and that's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We all okay there? The next thing is a meeting with the Oshkosh Area School Board, we're looking at February 11th or March 11th. Any thoughts on that?
Let's do February 11th.
I'm open either day, doesn't matter to me.
Oh, I got to think for a second.
This is part of the...
February 11th, I think I'm fine, March 11th?
They're both Wednesdays.
Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm okay on March 11th.
This is typically, this is a school board meeting workshop date for them, so we've been invited to join them at the school district. You recall, the last time we had this, a few years ago, they came here, so they've asked us to join them at their board meeting. That's, it's on a Wednesday. So I'll get the exact time because it's really going to be about how their schedule works out. I'll share with them Ms. Pansky's schedule so that we can try to move it a little later. But I'll get the exact time. I'm meeting with Superintendent Stan Mack on Thursday, so I'll have more information for you. We're going to discuss potential topics, and I'll share that with the council as well. But I'll give you an exact time after I meet with Mr. Mack.
Okay, so we're talking February 11th at this point?
Mm-hmm.
February 11th? That works.
As long as the time is okay.
Okay, February 11th. All right, the next item on the agenda is direction of the staff on open liquor licenses. A little bit of introduction to this. Periodically, we have open liquor licenses. We didn't used to have very many of them. We are limited by state law to, I think, 132 liquor licenses, which we can award out there. It used to be highly competitive out there. They haven't been quite as competitive in the past few years. And sometimes there are no open liquor licenses, and this year there are a number. I'll ask the clerk to comment on what we actually have. I don't know if the number's like three or four open liquor licenses in just a second. We had indicated previously several months ago that we would tell people that after the first of the year, we would take a look at applications and have people come before us. We did indicate at that time that if people were interested in liquor license, and if we announced that we were going to consider awarding those liquor licenses, that we'd like to see them come with a plan. We'd like it to be a pretty well thought out plan. So now it's up to us, council, do we want to go ahead with that? It is after the first of the year, the best to be put on the agenda. We had told people we were going to look at that and have them, provide them the opportunity if they so desire to come before us. A quick question of the clerk, what do we have in the way of open liquor licenses at the current time, and what's the list of people who appear to have an interest?
We have four open licenses. One is been reserved at the Marion location. We have six applicants that have filed papers that are interested in the remaining three.
Okay, so there are some papers, but they're not...
We haven't made any determination if they're eligible. They're, the clerk has not gone through that yet, and we'll, we'll do that before we would have any type of presentation with the council. If they're not eligible, for example, zoning or something like that, we would, we would just simply not bring those to council.
Okay, do we want to set a meeting in which we would indicate that we will have people make presentations? Yeah, Mr. Come.
I have a question first of the city clerk. I think over the past year or so, we've had people come to us with kind of sob stories about they're trying to sell their property and the liquor license is part of it, and so forth and so on. Are there licenses out there that are not being used? Are we aware of it?
For example, like the tallies, they recently closed.
The tallies, there was also...
The tilted kilt.
Mahonies.
The council had given us direction, it used to be that we would have to wait an entire year, which in some cases could almost be two years before council saw it. Last year, council said that once we become aware that a business is no longer operating, that we should start the clock immediately, and after one year of inactivity, we come back to council and point that out. Sometimes those folks renew, and after a year, we bring it to your attention now. Other times, they don't renew and simply it becomes available. So it really, I think it's better because then it's fair to everybody. It's one year regardless of when your year began. We're aware that one has since expired, that was Timbuk 2. We have to bring that to council, though, so that's not, that's why that's not on the list yet because we bring it to council. It literally just reached a year yesterday, so it would have been premature to bring it to you tonight. They could have done something as of yesterday. So next meeting, we'll bring that to your attention as well. But those three we have open, plus the one reserved on Marion Road.
The one I'm thinking of, there was a council meeting when a license, it was kind of last minute, was switched from the old Knights of Columbus to Bangkok or Thai restaurant in Indian University. Do we know if in fact they are serving liquor there? It was a real quick last minute switch from one location to the other.
One of the things that we learned from a previous liquor license application is as long as they're selling some type of alcohol, it doesn't matter what intensity of use they're using for that. That Thai restaurant is still using that Class B liquor license, and we don't have any reason to question that they're not. But are they selling, you know, hard liquor?
Right.
They're not required to, but they're able to? Whether they do it or not is entirely up to them, and we had a couple of cases like that.
Yeah, that's true.
Mr. Roloff, you mentioned, or the clerk mentioned, that we have a reserved liquor license for the Marion Road. That's, that's more or less an economic development type? I mean, it's assigned currently to the Marion Road area, but could that be moved to, upon staff learning of, say, a hotel, motel, resort wanting to come in and they need a liquor license, that that could be moved to another location? Or I know there's been some discussion that should we hold one or two back for economic development or future economic development plans where they may need a liquor license? So the one on Marion Road, is it tied up just to Marion Road and we can't move it?
It is morally committed to Marion Road. That has been, that predates me being with the city, so that's over six years, and we have done everything to make sure that we've been able to hold on to that because I think for some of these redevelopment areas, as I pointed out in my memo, that there are, there is some value to hanging on to something for some unique project. And the idea was that Marion Road may be one of those, that we would need it. And I would agree with you that there may be a couple of other places. And I would suggest that as you evaluate whoever comes before you, that you think about other potential possibilities out there. You are not required to award any, or any of them at all. So that's entirely up to you. If you want to reserve those for something better, something different, that's entirely up to council's discretion. You could take away the Marion Road designation. I wouldn't recommend that because of, I think we've made a moral commitment, but the council has every ability to do that as well.
That being said, so we don't have to identify a location? We could just say we only have two liquor licenses available, even though we actually have three? And we just leave one kind of in the bullpen, if you want to call it that?
Absolutely. And I think that that is something that council needs to give some thought to. If you had three great proposals, I think you'd be compelled to want to grant them, but great is in the eye of the beholder, and the council is the one that gets to make that call.
So before we bring anybody forward, I guess I'm looking for a direction from your, you or from the city attorney to, is it better to let those out there know that we are only going to give out two, even though we have three available with one reserved to Marion Road?
I would comment and say, "I don't know if we're going to give out any."
That's true.
Because we've made it pretty clear that as we go ahead, we're going to look for unique development opportunities. Things are unique if there's, so I think we, we set a date for when we're going to do it. We listen, and then we make the decision whether we award it.
I'm okay with that, too.
Because when people come, the history, I've been on this for a number of years. The history is we have not seen a tremendous number of nice plans that are set to go. Not, I want one because I think someday I might want to sell a building that might have it in.
Right.
I think the council indicated that before. So if we see four great plans, we might decide to award them all, but if we don't, we don't have to award any. We may hold four of them for the great plans whenever they come. But I think we're better off looking at proposals and then making that decision because otherwise it sort of implies that we're going to say, if we hold two back, we're going to award two. We may not want to award two.
That's a good point.
So I think the sequencing, and we can have that discussion at a later point in time if the people agree with that concept.
That's fine.
But I think your question about procedure, I'd rather set this meeting sooner rather than later and get going, and there is...
Right.
A seasonality to some of the proposals, I know, you know, getting, getting, making some decisions by, I don't know, was there a period of time for which a liquor license needs to become activated at the time it's approved by a council, or is it immediately?
Once you approve it and it's met all the inspections, it can be issued right away.
It can happen pretty quickly.
But now, do they also get a calendar year if, let's say, they, we approved the plan, and now they got to either build a building, or retro a building, or whatever they got to do to make it to open? Do they have like a calendar year to open it, and if they don't, it can be rescinded?
I would say yes.
And also, we could set the conditions because they may come and say, "I want to open this in six months to try and do it." We may say, "Okay, we'll hold it for six months."
Okay.
We're, we're in control of exactly what it is after listing the plan. That's correct.
So it's kind of like the planning commission putting conditions on the...
We could put, we have done that in the past.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so I think probably what we ought to do, at least, we have the one with Timbuk 2 coming up, and that ought to be on the next council agenda. And then the council meeting after that, we probably ought to announce, so that would be in the first meeting in February.
We could do it that way. It'd just be cleaner.
But I think we ought to know whether or not we have Timbuk 2 on there, and we can't really do that till the next meeting. And that would give everybody a month to come up with their, their plan if they're going to do it. Plus, other people could apply.
Is there any noticing requirement, Pam, that we would need to do to...
I was going to say, we haven't gotten the information yet in our office. We have to draft the complaint, and so I will try to get it done for the next meeting, but I don't, I haven't received the information yet, so.
What I think I heard council say, though, is you want to wait until Timbuk 2 gets resolved before you schedule, so if...
Well, but we also want to get that scheduled pretty soon so that people know what the date is, and so that if there's some timeliness to any of these particular projects, that we can move forward, so let's...
Okay. I mean, another option, I mean, you could have this hearing as soon as we let these folks know, hearing isn't the right word, but presentations, and if you choose to give some out, you can just hold the others in abeyance. Just because you didn't say yes doesn't mean you necessarily said no type of thing. So you could hear everybody's presentation, and you could always bring it back. I'd like to consider IDAC. We gave them to A and B. I'd like to consider C now. Council can bring it up at any time.
You know, in the night of the presentation, we don't have to make the decision either, right?
Entirely up to the council.
We're, we're in control.
Are we doing it on a council night?
Okay, could we do, if we weren't ready with Timbuk 2 for the next one, could we do Timbuk 2 the same night we do the other ones? Sort of want to get to those as quickly as possible. So we would know at that point in time.
We can do that.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Allison Osby?
Oh, basically, what Mayor Tower said certainly was, are my sentiments exactly. I certainly support what Mayor Tower has to say because I think it's one of those things that's highly desirable, and I, before I even was on council, I would watch, and there would be a number of people looking for the liquor license. It's in economic development, it's just one extra tool in our toolbox, and I think it's right in line. And to Mayor's point, just because there's four available doesn't mean we have to give the four out. With the visioning study, with for the riverfront, with what Go EDC is doing, and just the overall comprehensive plan for the city, you know, we're not just going to settle for just something that comes along. You know, we want to make sure that it's the right, the right project, so.
Okay, so we will let people know that we'll do it the first meeting.
Are we doing it on a council night, is that?
It's typically done at a council night early on in the, in the agenda, so you get get the whole time to hear all the presentations. That's typically how you do it.
And I think we want to make it clear out there, if Jeff is writing this down or whatever, that we want to see plans for real opportunities for things.
And that's one of the issues. One of the six is a vacant piece of property with absolutely no building plans in place. Frankly, I don't even think council should hear that one because there's, there's nothing to give a liquor license to. If they want to do a building, they're really doing it on spec, which is, unless I hear otherwise, I just don't think is appropriate to bring forward to council.
I think we're set, so we'll get that information out to those people that have applied, and Jeff can put it in the paper that we're going to do that in case anybody else wants to get an application. All right, I think that issue's settled. City manager compensation study, I'll turn to the deputy mayor for comments on that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just something for the council to consider because certainly after, you know, we had our closed session December 9th and, and conversations with city manager Roloff, certainly a compensation study was brought up. And I think it's something for council, maybe not necessarily to make a decision this evening, but certainly moving forward, you know, is that an investment of something that we would like to get an outside counsel or an opinion on? We have in the last couple of years, I've gotten some comparables done internally in regards to the Midwest. You know, do we want to continue doing that or, or do something different? So just bringing it out there, I know it was something that was on city manager Roloff's mind and wanted to address it with the council publicly, if that is something that we want to do to help down the road.
Okay, so I'm not looking for anything immediate tonight.
Nope, but just something to certainly consider.
Okay. Any comments on that? Okay, seeing none. We'll take us back to our, our second session with citizen statements to the council. Again, this is your opportunity to come on something good going on in the city or a concern you may have, if you would like to comment on something. The microphone is, is open there. Again, give us your name, give us your address. Limit your comments to no more than five minutes, no election earring. Don't speak to anything that's already been spoken to on the agenda tonight and speak directly to the council.
My name is Patricia Deener. I live at 1316 Broad. I come to you this evening in regard to, there is, has been funds, and I'm, I'm saying it to the open, in regard, there are funds, and I think that our officers should start being, wearing recording systems. I think it's going to help the system, it's going to help the people. And I heard that there is funds, and I want to thank the city of Oshkosh, especially this city hall. We have opened the chambers here for a friend of mine, his step down, Tom Petry. He has done a tremendous job. He's done a tremendous job with our family and circumstance.